Agenda, any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council, I don't have any additions or corrections for them.
Make a motion to approve it?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve the agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. Invocations from River Hope. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Hans Peterson. I'm pastor at River Hope and music opens my heart. And so hopefully it opens yours as well, at least has the opportunity to do with all of us. While I come from a very specific tradition, Lutheran Christian perspective, when I speak of words like love and light and life, they might mean certain things to Lutheran Christians and might mean something to someone who doesn't even necessarily worship at a particular, particular faith setting. But my hope is that, that as you go about the business of tonight, that you would have open hearts, that you would have open minds, that you welcome the presence of love in however you name that love, and that it would guide your decision making also. This is an ancient Celtic lesson. It's been around for centuries and it's, I'll sing it just three times. It's very brief. May the long time sun shine upon you. All love surround you. And the pure, pure life that's within you. Guide your way home. May the long time sun shine upon you. All love surround you. And the pure, pure light that is within you. Guide your way home. May the long time sun shine upon you. All love surround you. And the pure, pure life that is within you. Guide your way home.
Make a motion.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united in the Constitution, with the vision and justice for all.
Next is recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything to add? We've got a couple of resolutions under there and I think we'll do them one at a time here. Resolution number 15632, accepting $600 donation from Walter and Lynn Clay for the Police Department, future equipment purchases.
Make a motion to accept that? Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to accept that donation. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion carries. Resolution number 15638, resolution accepting $5,000 donation from Chad Greenway to lead the Way Organization for Fireman's Park Project.
Motion to approve resolution 15638. Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to accept that donation. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. We have resolution number 15639, resolution accepting $400 donation from the Ridge Valley Township for assistance to the city of Silver Lake Pool.
Make a motion to accept that donation? Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to accept that donation. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. Comment, citizens addressing the council, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Keep your comment to another five minutes. All righty, we have approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of September 12th, 2023, and the council workshop of September 12th, 2023.
Motion to approve the minutes of September 12th and workshop and meeting. Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to approve, accept those minutes as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda, this will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off the discussion. A is approval of resolution number 15628, resolution to dispose of surplus Creekside property. B is approval of resolution number 15634, resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of conditional use permit for a used car sale lot in a taxi zone district located at 845 Highway 7 West with favorable planning commission recommendation. C is approval of resolution number 15635, resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of conditional use permit to move a single family dwelling to 505 California Street Northwest with favorable planning commission recommendation. D is approval of resolution number 15636, resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of conditional use permit to move a single family dwelling from 135 First Avenue Northwest to 1831 Island View Circle Southwest with favorable planning commission recommendation. E is approval of contract with HKGI to update Hutchinson downtown plan. F is approval of accepting of the growth area plan. G is approval issuing short-term gambling license to the Upper Midwest HD Club from July 26 through the 28th, 2024 at McLeod County Fairgrounds. H is approval of lift station control panel improvement project. I is claims appropriation contract payments. Is there anything that anybody wants to pull up? Entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve consent agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. Get down to unfinished business. We have second reading and adoption of ordinance number 23-842, ordinance amending Chapter 95 and 113 of the Hutchinson City Code to reflect cannibal cannabis use, vaping, and ecstasy and increase the age for the sale, use, and possession of tobacco products from 18 to 21 years of age.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, at your last meeting, you had approved the first reading of this ordinance. Just to recap, this past legislative session, the legislature did make the use of cannabis legal in Minnesota and gave cities the option to control it in public areas. As part of the first reading that you approved, the ordinance was changed to first of all recognize the use of cannabis, but making it illegal to use cannabis products in certain city parks and with a certain, and within a certain distance of playgrounds. And while we were addressing that topic, we also amended other portions of our tobacco ordinance and as the mayor indicated in the introduction, made it illegal for anyone under 21 years of age to use or possess tobacco products. And we changed the age that previously was defined in the ordinance as a minor of someone being under 18, we raised that up to 21. But other than that, nothing's been changed since the first reading of this ordinance. I don't know if the council has any questions about it, but if not, I would ask that you approve the second reading and adopt it.
Just two things on that 18 to 21, the state had changed that, if you may recall, the state had changed a lot, we just hadn't updated our ordinance yet. And then secondly, I think it's important to note that what we're doing, I shared this at the last meeting, is basically the use of cannabis will mirror the use of tobacco in the city ordinance.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. New business, amending VFW Coast 906 liquor license, include liquor consumption sale in the parking lot.
Mayor Council, Melissa can help us out a little bit with this one. But as a part of the requirement with liquor ordinance, you have to state kind of where you're serving it, they're serving it outside of the building within the parking lot. So to do that, it's allowed by our city ordinance, we just have to update their permit to specifically state the allowance to do that. Correct, Melissa?
So they kind of said that they want to have tailgate buildings.
Well, they did a list of the dates, right?
Yeah. Do it for a rest.
Yep. Yep. And then we've got, I would say the breweries got a similar situation of this. I think there's a couple other people that have permits outside of their building to do that.
Yeah, we'll probably just keep it permanent for their renewal, you know, for next year's carter license, it will be their building plus the parking lot, so that.
Motion to approve. Makes sense.
So really, we're just amending it now for the rest of the year, not necessarily specific to these dates, that's all.
So would you be occurring without going through council then?
Well, they would still have to get their annual renewal for next year, but it would just be a part of that.
You have to request that in their license.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. By Pat, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. First reading of ordinance number 23-843, ordinance vacating drainage and utility easements located in Settlement's Third Edition. And that is my properties, so I will be abstaining from the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As you indicated in your introduction, this proposal here is to vacate an existing drainage and utility easement in Settlement's Third Edition. Right now, what we did is replatted this property a couple months back, and this easement right here that's highlighted in yellow was the old property line, and that's where the electric utilities run, as well as some small utilities. So with the property line being located to the south, the idea is that the new drainage and utility easement would be located down here, those utilities would be located within that easement, and that would allow this other lot to be fully developed as a future commercial property. So if there's no questions, staff would recommend approval of the first reading of the vacation of the drainage and utility easement.
So one question I would have, Dan, is that whole line going to move to the south then to that easement on it?
Yeah, so right here, the pedestal's right here in the corner. They'll, they'll slide this down here and then come straight west to over here.
They'll service the two new lots and then?
Yeah, and then also they may service some of the other areas as well. I'm not sure what the actual feeds are on that, but we want to make sure we maintain the existing service for sure. Any other questions?
The same question I had. Motion to approve?
Second. Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve, let me abstain. Any other question? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. We got resolution number 15629, approving the 2024 HRA preliminary tax levy.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So tonight we have a series of preliminary tax levies that you will need to consider and approve in order for us to certify them to the county by the end of the month here. Let me just get to full screen mode. So one quick reminder with these preliminary levies, we'll be coming back to you in December for the final levies. And at that time, the final levy can always be lower than what you approved tonight, but it can't be higher. So just wanted to get that out there right away. So starting with the HRA, similar to the EDA, these are both special taxing districts of the cities. They're both limited in their tax levy per state statute. And with the, with the HRA, it's a percentage of the city's estimated market value, with our estimated market value being just over 1.5 billion. That equates to a maximum levy for the HRA of $278,410. The HRA board, however, only needs $165,000 to fund its operations for next year. So that's the amount they are requesting. And this graph kind of shows you the, the recent history of the maximum levy shown with the blue line at the top and then their actual levy that they've requested in the green bars. So you can see they followed along with the maximum levy for most of this timeframe. And then as market values increased substantially, they found they didn't need to utilize that entire levy. And then in 2023, there was a significant drop that was due to the retirement of the prior HRA director and then some staffing changes. So they're operating quite a bit underneath that maximum levy limit set by state statute. So with that said, I ask that you approve the preliminary levy for the HRA, their 2024 preliminary levy at $165,000.
Smooth. Go ahead, Dave.
Then you?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Dave, second by Pat to approve the HRA preliminary tax levy. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. Resolution number 15630, approving the 2024 EDA preliminary tax levy.
Okay, similar to the HRA, the EDA has a levy limit set by state statute. And that again is based on the estimated market value of the city. And that levy limit for 2024 amounts to $272,842. And that is the amount that the EDA board is requesting to fund its operations for next year. And similar to the HRA, here's the graph showing the, the maximum levy in the, as the blue line at the top and the levy amount that the EDA board has requested over the timeframe. You can see they've requested the maximum levy amount each of these years. So with that said, I ask that you approve the 2024 preliminary tax levy for the EDA at $272,842.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve the 2024 EDA preliminary tax levy. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. Resolution number 15631, approving the 2024 general fund and debit service preliminary tax levies.
So I just want to start this out by saying, the budgets we're looking at here in the following pages are all similar to what Matt showed two weeks ago at the budget workshop. Nothing's been changed at this point, although we are continuing to work on the budget. So this component, this is our, what we call our city tax rate. This is what shows up on the property tax statements as the city of Hutchinson. It consists of our general fund and in addition to our debt service funds. So in fact, in this example, we have two different components of our general fund. Up at the top, we have this little over $6.5 million to fund our operations, and then we also have $30,000, which is the, the tax abatement subsidy that city council approved for Upanor several years ago. So we actually have to increase our tax levy to make that payment. But then down below, all these debt service funds here, those are to, to pay for the roadway and improvement projects that we've bond for each year, in addition to the new police facility that, that we also had to issue bonds for. So the amounts shown here individually for each year, those are the amounts we need as tax levy dollars to make the debt service payments on those individual bond issues. And then the ones labeled special assessment bonds, kind of in the middle there, those all also utilize special assessment payments from taxpayers to help pay the debt service. So in total, we need $2,477,487 to help make our debt service payments next year. And that brings the total city preliminary tax levy to $9,014,428. And just a few slides, I know Matt showed something similar to this in the budget workshop. You know, we have a, we're looking at a 12% preliminary tax levy increase at this point, and I just wanted to show how we get to that. So starting with the expenditures, we're up about $934,000, which is 16% increase to our tax levy alone without any offsets with additional revenue. And you can see in red, the main driver there is, is the wages and benefits went up over $657,000. So that's the main driver behind the expense increase. Then we did have some revenue increases, our, our local government aid from the state increased about $200,000, so that helps to offset our expenditure increase. We actually tempered our building permit revenue, revenue $50,000. We lowered that just knowing we're coming maybe into a tougher housing market. And then we have $82,000 roughly of other revenue sources, bringing the total revenue increase to a little over $232,000, which reduced our tax levy impact from the expenditures by 4%. And then that ends up being a net tax levy increase of $702,190 for a 12% levy increase. This is just a look at our, our city levy over the last several years. You can see the red line at the top represents the total levy. The blue bars at the bottom is our general fund levy, and then the, the green bars in the middle, that's our, our debt fund levy. And the debt fund levy was actually at the same level for many, many of the years throughout this analysis. It was really just that general fund that was kind of moderately increasing in those early years. But down at the bottom, you can see our general fund levy over this timeframe, on average, is increasing 3.9%, while our debt levy is increasing 1.8% for a total city average levy increase of 3.3%. That skewed a little bit with this year's preliminary levy being quite higher than normal. If we took 2024 out of there, you can see we'd be about a 3% average levy for the general fund and 2.6% for the overall city levy. And this, again, Matt showed this at the last workshop. We're looking at the far column on the right with tonight's preliminary levy shaded green, where we have a 9.3% tax levy increase. You can see that has an adverse impact on our tax rate. We actually increased from our 2023 tax rate of 53.6%, we increased a little above 55.3%. And then down below that, we show the impact to our median home value, which we're anticipating has increased from about $230,000 in value to $250,000. And then that amounts to about $106 of new city taxes, and that's just city taxes alone in that county or school. That would be the impact of what you're deciding here tonight for the preliminary tax impact, not the final. And then just wanted to quickly go over the debt tax levy. You can see the top line in red, that's, this is where we're at tonight. We're discussing 2.47, or 2.47 million. But our plan was to ramp it up over the course of time with moderate increases to the levy. And a lot of that is due to the new police facility, which is shaded in, in, sorry, yellow. But it's also due to our anticipated new debt related to our roadway and infrastructure projects. I think back in 2016, we made the decision to increase our debt related to roadways, which more or less dealt with rising costs. So we knew all along that our debt levy was going to increase due to that decision. And then the police facility came along and just went above and beyond that. But we were able to fill some gaps in the early years by paying off existing debt at higher interest rates to help pay off more of that PD debt here with less debt out in the future. So that was a beneficial decision. And then just a summary look at our, our various levies. We talked about the EDA and HRA at the bottom, and then we just went through the general fund. $9,014,428 represents a 9.3% tax increase for the city. And then overall with the EDA and HRA, we're at about a 9.1% preliminary tax levy increase. So with that said, I thought I'd just open it up to any questions or comments you may have before we look for you to approve this preliminary levy.
What's the big difference between option four and five? Where are we seeing the?
With option four, I mean, the, the only difference is we're, we'd have to cut about 3% out of our general fund tax levy, which is, is very doable, I believe. That would, as far as the difference, our tax rate would go up about a half a percent or more, and then $81 impacted the median home value. So I'm not sure if that addresses your question, did you have any?
We're just trying to show that the different, what the different levels of a tax increase would have and what that impact would be on the, it's not necessarily a budget that we've looked at yet. The one that we've looked at is the, is the one on the far right. That's the one that was presented at the workshop on the 12th or whatever, so.
We typically look at what a 0% tax levy would have for an impact. And then in the last few years, we've been looking at, what does it, what does it take to get to a zero impact on our tax rate? So this column is, is doing that. That's saying we'd have to get down to a 7.4% increase to maintain our tax rate. But we simply showed you these other options, just, just for illustration purposes. This one, I don't think we'll be able to get to, but this one is, is, is doable, I believe.
All right, like I said, I'm not opposed to tonight approving a higher value. I'm just looking at what way we can be, I don't want to seem frugal, but make sure that we're paying attention to how our taxes are in the city, especially with the economy the way it is right now.
Right. I think Tim, before you guys get to a final, we'll have probably two or three options for you that will show what those impacts are. As in, okay, this is the additional revenue, these are additional cuts, this, that, this is what that would mean for services provided to the community.
Thank you, because that's exactly what I'd be hoping.
We'll do that before your final budget is approved.
And being the budget's 285 pages, that's, takes a little bit of time to go through. And there is stuff in there.
It's only 285 after we're all done approving it, but we'll definitely be bringing it back for the truth of taxation meeting in early December, and then likely before that, you'll see a version of it as well. So there'll be a few different opportunities for you to see how this. So there'll be a few different opportunities for you to see how this budget has progressed from what you're seeing tonight.
Okay.
My first year, Tim, I had that same concern, but the guy that's been here for a long time reassured me that sometimes these guys can work pretty good magic with what they do.
I don't disagree with that. I don't disagree with that at all.
I was nervous as could be when I saw that first one the first time.
Yeah, you have the timing of sitting down with directors, it doesn't always lend itself to happening before the preliminary levies. But now Matt and I will be sitting down with each director, going through the budget line by line and seeing where we can find items that we can reduce or add new revenue or whatnot.
So if I have questions on the preliminary that you sent, I should just send it to you or Matt to have, because you can get those questions answered? Would that be an easier way to do that?
That's the way to do it.
Okay, because I don't want to get.
Yep.
It's easier to streamline it through one or two people and get those questions answered, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else for Andy? Entertain a motion to.
So moved. Except the preliminary one five six three one budget, general fund debt service, I mean.
I'll second that.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. Setting truth in taxation hearing.
Yes, Mayor, Council, every year we have our public hearing for the public to provide comments and feedback regarding the proposed budget and tax levy. We need to set that now because when the tax statements go out, that that information is provided. Staff is recommending that we set that for six o'clock PM on Tuesday, December fifth. The alternative would be that Thursday, December seventh, but our recommendation is that Tuesday, fifth of December at six o'clock.
I will make a motion to set that as the meeting.
Second.
Which date? The fifth? Motion by Chad, second by Tim to set the truth in taxation hearing for November fifth, that's six o'clock.
December fifth.
December fifth?
December fifth at six o'clock. You said November.
Oh, that's what I thought when I heard.
December. Well, if I said November, then it's December.
Yeah. Well, this always strains me out, so that's good. Okay, so December.
Yeah, at six P M.
At six P M. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. We have minutes, reports in some committees, boards and commissions. We have Hutchinson Utility Commission minutes from July twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three. Public Arts Commission minutes from August ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Planning Commission minutes from August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Hutchinson Housing and REIT Development Authority Board minutes from August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And the Hutchinson, city of Hutchinson, financial report and investment reports for August of two thousand twenty-three. Chief Jefferson, you got anything for us tonight?
Nothing.
Mike, do you got anything else? Andy, do you have anything else for us?
Nothing.
All right. Eric, you got anything for us?
Nothing tonight.
All righty. Dave, let's start with you tonight. Do you have anything?
I don't have anything unless I think while someone else talks about something.
Okay. We'll go with that. Pat?
Nothing.
All right, Chad?
An extra.
Mr. Tim?
The Military Vehicle Preservation Association, who came through Hutch last year with the eighty vehicles, will be here next summer. They chose Hutchinson as their favorite city to visit after the fairgrounds last time offered a great night for them, and they'll be trying to put it into conjunction with another event in Hutchinson, so they will be coming here next year, and we're pretty excited about that. It's about eighty to a hundred refurbished World War Two and World War One vehicles, so.
Trucks, jeeps.
Trucks, jeeps. They had a tank, they had just about everything. They'll be open for the public to go through and ask questions and all that, so accommodation to Hutchinson for being so welcoming. They did a tour around the city, a parade around the city, and our police department helped them with that on short notice, and it turned out to be a very popular event, and they voted and decided to come back through here again, so.
Very good. That's good. Anything else, Tim?
That's it.
Yeah.
Just a reminder that this Saturday is the fall cleanup, so you got two items, and if you're at for residential properties, only those that pay carpet service fees from the city, so it's not apartments or multifamily, but that's this Saturday. You get stuff out by six in the morning.
They're they're early.
Yeah, we'll pick it up and probably people will start putting them out already, and people will pick it up throughout the week, and that's fine, if that's what people want to do. And then October third next week, I think is a Tuesday, we do have the bonding committee is going to be coming and touring our Hats facility and taking a look at the Lake River Basin, which is two of our bonding requests that will be out at the Hats facility. If you're interested in coming, just let me know, and we'll get you the details, so. That's it.
All righty. Well, all I have is that, you know, it's getting that time of year again, so be cautious with farm equipment on the road. Nowadays, they have some big equipment, so especially at night, be cautious, I mean, they usually do have lights on, but slow down a little bit, give them room, because they are big, and your car is no match for some of those big tractors and combines and stuff, so. With that, that's all I had.
I'm truly glad you brought that up, because I thought you was going to start talking about fire, hydrants and snow.
Not yet. That'll be pretty soon, though.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to adjourn. Any other question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say nay for adjourn. Thanks, everyone.